Okay, welcome. This is January 2nd, 2019, 6:00 PM at Town Hall. I'll call to order. I'd like to first wish everyone, hopefully, had a great holiday season. The announcements for tonight are, we did have a power outage on Main Street the other day. It did cause some electrical damage to the Town Hall. Nothing that major that can't be repaired. The fire chief and the facilities manager, Phil, jumped on that and the fire alarm circuit board was repaired, the furnace was repaired, and we're still looking at some telephone issues. And just letting you know that the power's been restored from Main Street. Do we have any other announcements?
The Town Clerk has just asked that people return the census forms as quickly as they can. There's a drop box at Town Hall, so we'd like, everybody should have received those already. Other than that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody here for public forum this evening? Now, under public forum, you're right to present whatever you'd like, but we do not respond to public forums. So, public forum, go right ahead. There's a microphone right there if you want to.
My name is Jessica Corwin, and I'm the general music teacher at Hatfield Elementary School. I'm joined tonight by Leslie Lassard, and Amy Hudzik, and Laura Hoy, who are also teachers. We are all members of the Hatfield Teachers Association Health Insurance Committee, and we're here tonight to ask for your support and engagement in working toward increasing all town employees' health insurance contributions from the town from 50% to 75%. We have been looking at data comparing towns and realized that compared to other towns in Franklin and Hampshire County, we'd like to give you this data to look at yourselves. Our benefits are not in line with other surrounding towns. In the last two years, between the two schools in Hatfield, we've lost five teachers and one administrator who all have served in Hatfield for at least five years. They've all gone to other districts where their compensation is greater. Some of them have publicly said that they had to leave because their families could no longer afford for them to continue working in Hatfield. So, we're losing institutional knowledge, we're losing relationships within the town when people depart because of these financial circumstances. We love Hatfield. We love working here. We want to continue working here. We want to see Hatfield thrive, and we really believe that retaining the best employees and being able to hire the best employees as replacements when needed is in Hatfield's best interest. And we also realize that this is likely to require an override if it happens. And we are eager to work toward that and help convince the community that an override is in the town's best interest. We've already had contact with many parents of, many parents who are townspeople and voters who are eager to work on this with us. Anything I forgot?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we don't respond to public forums, so.
And thank you for the information.
Who do I contact about next steps? Who might we reach out to?
Okay, I guess we can talk with Marlene and get back to you. How's that sound?
Thank you.
Because we have to digest it and figure out what we're allowed to do and not to do, okay? How's that sound? Good? Anybody else here for public forum? No? Okay, the, this meeting was, uh...
Nope. I didn't know if you guys had something to do, or are we gonna, want me to call in to...
We need to approve minutes from November 7th meeting.
We have to approve minutes, yeah, and we should call our meeting, Finance Committee meeting, to order since we are a separate committee, and we do have minutes that need to be approved, and we do have, we have, did you, somebody sent me, send us a request for...
A reserve fund transfer.
Reserver.
That would be me, unless someone else did.
Okay, let's start with it, let's start with the minutes.
Oh, it's in your mail box.
Sean, you were present at that meeting.
Diane, you were.
Okay, I just want to reiterate what this meeting's for is mostly with the Finance Committee to talk to the accountant and on the phone and get some information as they have to care of finances. So, so far in all these finance meetings, what we do is, we, we first have the Finance Committee ask whatever questions they're doing, then we'll ask the questions, and after our questions are set, because some of the questions have been submitted already to, to Justin, so then, then we'll open it up to the public. So, now I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. So, what minutes do we have?
From November 7th.
November 7th, okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Let me make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, we took care of that. So, the only, the next order of, well, I think what we ought to do now is, let's call into Justin, and I know Marlene has gone, there is a, oh, here, maybe she's got it now. She's got a request for a transfer, and I can't remember what this is for, but, oh, yeah.
About to find out.
Yeah, I guess we're gonna find out right now. Sorry, Marlene.
All in your mail.
Oh, yeah, great. All right. All right. So, we, amount requested is $4,700 for insurance. I guess we're low on that, and I guess my question, one of my...
And it's for the current fiscal year?
Yes.
It is.
Current fiscal year.
We're negative $4,6795.20.
And will the $4,700 get us through until...
That's going to, what I'm requesting will cover the deficit and a bill that's pending.
And a bill that's pending. Okay. I'll pass that along so you guys can look at it. So, Diane, what we do when a request has been made is, and generally, the accountant who in this case now is Justin, looks at it, and he tells us, number one, if it's actually a true deficit, and number two, if we have money in our line item to pay for it. What else might?
That's it. He may not be able to tell us either one of those things. Well, he can't, I don't know, can he tell us?
I think...
He sent an email.
He sent an email confirming that.
It is definitely.
And I had reviewed the reports, expense reports, and it...
Well, I'm sure we have the money, it's the question about...
Right, yeah, because we've not, we have not transferred any money for...
It says here that the town will receive a credit from the property that was sold for tax title.
Right, that will go to the general fund.
Be reappropriated.
It'll have to be reappropriated.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know how much that is?
I don't.
Okay. Well, I guess we need to pay our health insurance bill.
Oh, that's, this is not health insurance.
What is this for?
This is property liability insurance.
Property insurance, okay. Property insurance.
Also need to pay that.
I'm less attached to that.
Okay.
But it says here that the amount requested is 4,700, but the mountain deficit is 4,695.
Right, there's a pending bill to be paid.
The actual deficit is 35.16.
We will be in deficit.
And did I reference in the description that there is a bill and the amount that needs to be paid? It's a current bill.
Yes, $1,132.
Bringing the deficit to 4,695.
Right, okay, all right. You, sir.
Someone like to make a motion? Make a motion to transfer the sum of $4,700 to the insurance budget from the Finance Reserve account.
Okay, I'll second it.
There's a second? Any other discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we will, I have a pen. We will fill this out, and we'll give it back to you, and I guess...
And I'll send it to Justin.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a new world for us, too, so would we, in a normal case, would we just give this to you and you would give it to Justin?
I'll scan it and send it to him.
And you will send it to him. Okay. All right. And Justin has requested that we track our own, what we've spent, and so, you know, maybe as part of the minutes, and we can put together a simple Excel, just so we have a, you know...
I have a running list so far that includes the ones that were made in July.
Yeah.
But that was really for FY '18.
I have those and any requests that...
Yeah, that was for '18.
Yeah.
So, really, this is the first transfer for FY '19.
This is the first transfer for '19.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, I guess, if you're, if you're okay, Ed, the next order of business would be, let's call Justin and get...
Get rolling?
Get rolling.
Pass it on down.
Marlene?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a nine to dial out?
You're going to hit zero, see, 24, 0481, that first column of numbers.
0481?
Yes.
Perfect.
You do work for Verizon. I couldn't resist that. We're on the landline side, not the equipment side. Good one, Darrell.
Got him. I'm sorry.
Well, can I have you to dial over?
I do, yeah. You just have to dial over.
Thank you. I could have done that.
Still, I just wanted to get you to the outside line and...
Joining conference now. This call is being recorded.
Justin?
Hello?
Justin?
Yes.
It's Brian Moriarty.
Yep.
Ed, Cindy, Marlene, Darrell, Sean, Betsy, and Diane are here, and so, we've got you on a conference call, as you knew that was coming. The meeting's being televised as well. And I'm just gonna ask Darrell to make a comment to see if you can actually hear him.
Hey, Justin, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, great.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure, since we're sort of in an L shape, that everybody's questions, you'd be able to hear them. So, thank you for taking the time to, to meet with us remotely. We appreciate it.
Can you give an overview of what you sent out and what you found so far in your, in your work on the accounts payable side of things?
For FY '18.
For '18.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned in the email, it left the accounts payable piece at the very end of the project, just because, generally speaking, it's a more straightforward set of transactions. Our original plan was that we would simply just book entries for the year for everybody's transactional activity, just to get the budgets in line where they were, the old accounting system. When we started digging into things, we found that there were a fairly large amount of inconsistencies in terms of how bills being handled and how they were being paid. You know, just to be clear, I mean, this isn't, this isn't, I don't mean inconsistencies like there's fraud or there's anything of that nature that doesn't balance. You know, when I say inconsistencies, they say, you know, either between what the department requested to happen, or the, or a particular account number, or, you know, something of that nature. When we started to research before, it started to explain some of the issues that we were having in other areas of the project. So, for example, there's a component where we need to reconcile the receivables on the general, Town Accountant's general ledger, what the collector shows as outstanding amounts of money. In the 2017 audit, the auditors didn't even give the town an opinion on collector receivables because they were in such disarray. We noted that a large part of that issue was that, you know, transactions such as refunds for motor vehicle or real estate or personal property, they either were not processed, they were processed out of the wrong account numbers, a few instances they were processed to the incorrect individuals, and so, the effect that has is, the town would never be able to reconcile the GL account receivable ledgers to the collector under the circumstances because the activity is a complete mismatch. It also explains why for the 2017 audit, there was a number of receivable issues that, that could not be sorted out by the prior town accountant, and we noted that, especially for motor vehicle excise, there were approximately 50 or so motor vehicle excise refunds that have been granted by the Assessor's Office since February, March, and April, but they weren't put through a warrant until July, August thereafter to actually send refund checks out to people. You know, we have to take all of those things into consideration, we have to try to back into what the actual collector receivable number is, and after we started to notice these things, it, it occurred to us that the methodology that the auditors had used last year was flawed because they just used the collector's outstanding balances and then come to find out that there's a three or four month swing in these balances due to the way that they were processed through the warrant. So, some of these things are, were very benign, you know, it's the correct, it's the correct vendor, it's the correct amount of money, but if you pay it out of the wrong receivable account, or the wrong account number in general, it's just, it's gonna make it so that reconciliation is not possible between the offices. So, that's a fairly, you know, I don't wanna say minor example, but I mean, we've already found $30,000 or $40,000 for those very specifically collector refund activity that has been refunded out of the wrong place, that needed to go back to be fixed. I mean, I think we're up to 200 or something different payables that, you know, the right people, for the most part, right people got the check for the right amount of money. The account numbers they were paid out of, unfortunately, were not all, not all correct. We have some other issues where, you know, and actually, it was, it was one of the department heads that brought it to our attention a few weeks ago, where, you know, they were getting calls from vendors about past due balances on account, and with this one instance, we looked it up, that, you know, I'm just gonna make up a number, it was a $500 invoice, and the shipping was paid on the invoice, but not the thing that was on the invoice, right? So, you know, the town sent the vendor a $100 check or something, which represented the amount on the bill for the shipping, and then the $400 for the item that was actually purchased was never paid for. You know, and those things, we, you know, again, we've tried subsequently correct, you know, where we can identify there's an issue, and, you know, and we can find something. You know, basically what it boils down to is that, I think, especially with the account number things, some of it has not boiled down to maybe just inexperience. You know, for example, when you, you know, when you pay your real estate tax bill, right, I mean, you're paying for both real estate and community preservation. Well, you know, when you, when you refund somebody for that, you know, you have to refund them both, real estate and community preservation. Every single one of the real estate refunds that was processed only hit real estate, and not a single one of them hit community preservation, right? So, again, we're back to this situation where if, you know, the right amount of money went elsewhere, how it was reflected on the town's books, unfortunately, is not, is not accurate.
So, how are you, when, on your email, you said you thought this would maybe take a month? Are you, after a few days of looking at this, are you still of the same mindset?
So, I would say conservatively, yes. You know, so there are 57 account payable warrants that were issued by the Town Accountant's Office. We're through completely rebooking them from scratch. We're through 11 of them at this point. You know, I mean, unfortunately, that's not really a good benchmark because we'd already, you know, we'd already pre-reviewed, I think, 13 of them, you know, before we even got to this point. So, we had identified to some degree, we had identified to some degree where, where the issues already were in those, so they've gone maybe a little bit faster than, than normal.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, if, you know, we're averaging, you know, say, three to five hours a piece, but, I mean, I did one the other day that had 300 refunds, and it, and it took me two and a half days. So, you know, it, we're just taking each one of them as we go, and they take as long as they take. I mean, at this point, I mean, if we continue with pace that we're going, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we'll be done in a month.
Okay.
You know, the average warrant for the town, both for the rebooking and then what we're booking in FY '18 going forward, is somewhere between, you know, 100 and 200 invoices a week, and when the school's been there, you know, maybe that's another extra 100 invoices or so. So, unfortunately, it takes a little bit longer to redo it after the fact that it does, it's done correctly the first time, and, you know, again, part of what we have to evaluate is, you know, not even just reprocessing the invoice, we have to evaluate what actually happened the first time around versus what's happening in the rebook, and evaluating, you know, what corrective actions have to be taken, you know, if, if something is identified.
Okay. All right. Guys have questions?
So, we had originally talked about having the auditor come, what, the 10th of January?
The week of January 7th.
Yeah, the week of January 7th. So, obviously, that's not gonna be a good time for the auditor to begin. So, where, what impact will that have on our completing our year-end process?
So, the auditor indicated, he sent an email last week, I believe, and, you know, he indicated that, you know, if we are under the impression that there are, you know, issues that are gonna cause material problems with the actual final financials, that, I mean, they are inclined to just wait until we flush that all out, you know? For example, you know, if we get that, I mean, I, you know, the receivable, the receivable reconciliation between the collector's office and the county office, it hasn't been done as far as we can tell, I don't know, in four or five years at least. In three different instances, the town accountant simply adjusted the number back to the collector, and the reconciliation actually hasn't happened. So, you know, one of the things that we're endeavoring to do here is, the auditor provide these reconciliation schedules that show that we can actually prove that the activity that went through the GL tied to what the collector's office actually did, you know? And so, unfortunately, you know, if there's, you know, $80,000 worth of refunds that aren't booked correctly, I mean, if you're ready to translate out on the other side, there's $38,000 of activity that we can reconcile in one of those auditing schedules. You know, again, I think the thing to remember here is that, you know, I mean, we do a lot of these, and it's not very often that we get to the point where we have to rebook all the warrants because there's enough wrong that, I mean, the financials won't be right on the other side, you know? Cash receipts, line, you know, national activity, commitments, abatements, adjustments, stuff is all financed. You know, we have a little bit, we have a little, few odds and ends things with the budget that, you know, we're gonna get hammered out, and, you know, I had to email the Finance Committee about what, if that's taken care of, but it really boils down to, you know, expenses for the largest volume of transactions that you guys have. You know, if in the first step of all that activity that we reviewed, you know, we're getting already chalked up to a material, you know, misstatement of your financials, I mean, it kinda doesn't matter if all the rest of it is right if, you know, this 30% and, you know, materially incorrect. So, you know, what the auditor's has said is that, you know, once they get to March, they're gonna have a real issue coming out and scheduling. So, we're trying to hustle as quickly as possible, you know, over the next couple of weeks, to get this account payable thing hammered down so that we can plug it into all the rest of it and, you know, hopefully, hopefully get this stuff taken care of.
So, bottom line on this, Justin, well, is by doing this, this way, by really scrutinizing all the AP and fixing it and doing it right, it'll make us better prepared for the auditor, it should make the audit go better, it'll make, give us, it'll be better for D, from DOR standards because things'll look right. It's gonna take a little longer. We don't really think, or I'm assuming you don't really think it's a matter that there's money missing or whatever. It's pretty much kind of accounting inaccuracies that have gone on that, that need to be corrected. Is that, is all that kind of a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct, right. And so, you know, while we certainly hadn't planned on touching every single invoice for the town, I mean, at this point, I mean, we basically would have had to touch every single transaction for FY '18. I mean, I think the silver lining here is that, you know, it's come up a couple of these update meetings, well, you know, what about the deficit balances, you know, what about the things that we identified, you know, at tax time last year?
Right.
And I think the benefit here is that for some of these items, you know, we're able to put our hands on it now. You know, the example I keep using is the, you know, the Water Main Transition Project. You know, that one was identified as, you know, as being in deficit last year as well. I spent a good part of this weekend just researching town meeting minutes all the way back to 2006, you know, finding out, you know, where a lot of these things originated from and where the money is, how much was supposed to be there, and what's been charged there, you know, trying to hammer away at it. So, you know, we think that the byproduct of this is gonna be that we can address, I mean, not all of the deficits that are out there, but I mean, at least have a better handle on what is going on with them and potentially what caused them, which, you know, again, the original game plan was that was really gonna be a post free cash, post audit process when things were a little calmer. You know, we can double up on that now and start making some inroads on researching some of those things. You know, we're certainly doing that where we can.
Was it, go ahead.
Sorry, Justin, Sean, sorry. Is there, is there a possibility that we could find somebody or do something here at our level to help do things like research town meeting minutes, which doesn't necessarily require an accounting background, but just takes a lot of time?
So, I mean, I would say not, not effectively, right? So, I mean, luckily, at this point, I mean, that's literally what I had my entire weekend doing, right? So, we got part of it, you know, processed off the way, I mean, that's done. So, you know, it, it, I mean, not, not really, because it has to be in context of something, right? So, like, you know, I was provided with a tremendous amount of fantastic information from the Town Clerk. You know, she gave me an index all the way back to 2002 of every single town meeting article that has gone before the town in 15 years, and it was a tremendous resource. She was able to get me a lot of the town meeting information. But honestly, what happens is, a lot of the time, I don't even know what I'm looking for, right? Like, you don't know, always know specifically what you're looking for when you're doing the legal research, and so, while, I mean, yeah, you could have, you know, somebody else spend their time going through it, I mean, without it being in the context of what you're looking at in the financials, you know, I mean, I think it would be of, you know, maybe limited assistance in getting anything really moving forward.
Okay. Betsy, or Diane, all of you guys?
Um, Justin, it's Diane. I just have a question. Is there a way we can get the auditors in to just do testing at this point? If you don't have balances yet that you feel comfortable with, is there something they can do in the meantime?
Sorry, it cut out a little bit. Did you repeat that?
Sure. So, Diane asked that even though we don't have the final numbers, obviously, is it worth having the auditors come in and just, I guess, at a high level? Diane, is that...
Well, just to do some testing.
To do some...
To do some testing?
They, they don't need final balances to do that?
Okay.
And do internal control testing, things like that?
So, the question was about doing some, having the auditors do some internal, um, control testing, just even though we don't have the numbers? Is, is it worth doing or can we do that? That's the question.
So, we had, so we had talked to Roselli and Clark right after Thanksgiving, actually, about that, if they would take, take, take into consideration, you know, reviewing some of these things. And, um, they said while they would be willing to look at some of the things, like, so for example, if AP warrants are fine, they could, they could start looking at that stuff now, right? But, you know, because AP warrants, AP warrants are something that, you know, they can review ahead of time, because you can do it kind of in a vacuum. Um, so, um, but, you know, whereas they don't have that thing that they can look at in a vacuum, then there is nothing that they can really do, you know, the receivable reconciliation, the cash reconciliation, um, a lot of the analytic testing, that's all predicated on all of these other processes being done, right? So, if AP was the thing that was perfect, or, or, or reasonable even, um, you know, they could start doing that right now, but, so, so, um, it's one of those things that, you know, it's whether it's worth their time to really invest in it or not, right? So, you know, he had said that, um, you know, for the FY17 audit, you know, they came out a couple of times, you know, he booked hotel rooms, they had guys come out, right? And it was a limited value overall, um, and I think they're not looking to invest in that again unless the town can definitively say, you know, we have a substantial amount, it's right, it's done, it's not going to change. And I think we don't have the right elements of that to be willing to really come out to that end. I mean, we can certainly reach out to them and ask that question again, um, but, you know, my gut is they're looking to come out once, just do this thing in one shot and, and be done with it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah. No. Right. Any other questions for Justin? Um, so, I guess going forward, um, can you give us, you know, could, could you just email us and say two weeks and give us an idea how you're coming on things and certainly let us know if you find any problems that are deeper than what you've already, than what you've already found? And, and I guess my last question, and maybe it's more for Marlene, but it's for you too, should we be in contact with DOR, Mary Jane Handy and just let them know what's going on so they're not overly, I mean, they're always worried about us, but not overly worried about us?
Justin and I talked about that last week. Um, Justin, did you have an opportunity to, uh, connect with Mary Jane Handy?
So, I reached out, I reached out to her office, but I have not actually connected with her. So, um, I think what we're going to do is we're going to put together a, you know, written, maybe a written letter, you know, and as I had mentioned to Marlene, you know, I mean, we don't mind just doing that, you know, directly ourselves, you know, a, a, as us on behalf of the town and saying, you know, here's, here's, here's the original game plan, here's where it deviated, here's what we're, uh, here's what we're seeing and what we've, we've discussed with you as a town. And, um, and then, um, you know, we can provide the town with, you know, a, a quick email update at the end of every week or, or every, each Monday or something like that and, uh, just let you guys know where we are. I mean, honestly, the only things that we see that are potentially, I mean, and there's nothing you can really do about it necessarily, but, you know, you know, one of the things in my update was, you know, we're, we have questions about, you know, in some instances where bills are paid and there, you know, may or may not have been appropriation available, you know, I mean, there's, there's, you have to keep in mind that, you know, while we found some things that have made some of the deficits better, um, we're a fifth of the way through, right? And they can swing the other way as well. So, you know, again, there's, we, there's, nobody thinks that there's an instance where there's, you know, fraud or misfunds or anything like that, it's just, if you feel like your financials have been a mess for a while and, you know, if somebody paid, you know, a bill out of an account that maybe at the time it looked like it had money, but now after the fact, it's clear that it does not, you know, that, that might cause some issues. That, that's mostly going to affect things like free cash and things like that, but, um, y- you know, tho- those are the types of bumps in the road that we foresee, you know? We don't, we don't foresee issues, you know, that, you know, you spent a million dollars that you didn't have, for example, right? I mean, I think you guys would, uh, would know if you spent that kind of money and you didn't actually have it, right? So, I mean, it's one of those things that it's, uh, you know, matching up where, where the money ended up on the ledger, what the expenses were and trying to pair everything together and just come up to a clean answer of, you know, this is how much these things have.
Justin, back to updating the DOR, when do you anticipate you could send a summary to Mary Jane?
Oh, we can do, we can do it by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Justin, thank you. Um, as, as far as the finance committees, we're, we're okay unless select board. Do you guys have questions?
No, I, I think that, thank you, Justin, I, I think the questions that were sent in advance and the questions we asked here tonight, so, are, are fine.
Edwina or Sharon, you guys have any questions? Okay. Sounds like you got bedtime to get to, Justin.
We have one question.
Unfortunately, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
That's all right.
Mike has one question.
Edwina Gallery.
Yep.
Justin, um, so what kind of impact is this going to have on processing fiscal 19? Where, where are we at with that if you guys are spending so much time and effort still trying to reconcile 18?
Um, so we, we have different people working on 18 and 19. So, 19, um, as far as I know, and I mean, this is out of last Friday, um, you know, cash receipts, everything that we received from the treasurer's office for cash receipts and everything is tied down on our side through the end of November. Um, we need to get our hands on the last payroll of December and then the December monthly report to be ready to go out. And then also, now that the tax rate is set, we can start issuing 2019 revenue reports with, uh, you know, with budgets and analytics on them. So, the 19 side isn't impacted, I don't want to say it all, but it is very minimally impacted by special aid.
One other question, thank you. One other question. Um, I believe that this time last year, correct me if I'm wrong, we had, we had closed out 17 and actually had a free cash number from the DOR for a special town meeting at the end of January in 18. It would appear as though we're actually behind, we're actually behind, uh, now in 18 where we were at this point last year with 17.
We didn't have a free cash number until June.
I, I thought we had a free cash number for that special.
No.
We, we didn't.
No, you're right.
Yeah, we were June.
Okay. That notwithstanding, um, did, I'm trying to remember when the audit was completed for 17. You guys remember?
It was after town meeting.
After town meeting?
It was like in 2026.
Which was in May, yeah, June. Right, yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering if, if, or why didn't the auditors and/or you guys identify these same kinds of problems going on in fiscal 17?
We knew they were there, there, there was no way to reconcile them.
Right.
Because it goes back to 2006. Justin's trying to get a hold on some of those now.
Right.
He was even going to defer those issues this time around.
Because they were deferred last time, right? Roselli said, let's just.
Yes, just, let's just move on.
Don't deal with it, they are.
We wanted to fix.
There's some kind of warranty that's outstanding.
We are fixing this once and for all.
Exactly.
We are, eight of us are on board with that.
Yeah.
Um, because never want to be sitting here again.
Right.
With this topic.
Yeah, no.
All right, Justin, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Justin.
Hey, if you guys have any follow-up questions or anything, feel free to shoot me, uh, shoot me an email or, uh, come around to the call and I'm more than happy to, to talk to it with you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You guys.
Oh, all right.
Okay, so is our, well, that was good. So, as far as the finance committee is concerned, um...
So, we're aiming to get the audit done sometime in February?
Hopefully.
Okay.
We did not set a date, tell me, Roselli said, rather than set another date when you're comfortable contacting.
Wait, wait till Justin is comfortable. And, and I just wanted to let, I just went through our pile of mail, um, we did, and Marlene thinks we, she, she's going to check, but we, we have dues for the finance committee that we pay, um, annually, they're a hundred and sixty dollars, and so, they should have been paid, Marlene will check, but just so you can note.
Is that mass municipal, your due year financial dues for the year?
Yeah, right. And I, and there was, and Betsy, a copy of what we transferred in July.
Right.
And so, um, we can, we can attach these to, to our minutes to just, you know, this, you know, if, if we want, so.
Justin, got all the transfers that we did last year?
Yeah.
Well, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Um, so the last question or last topic would be fiscal 20 budgeting. We haven't really, we were kind of hoping that we were more or less done with 18 before we started budgeting and, so I, I did think about this a little bit and, and I was wondering if it's possible, and maybe it's a lot to ask Marlene, but is it possible that we, my thought was to have kind of a run at.
Preliminary.
Preliminary run at the spreadsheet if we keep state aid the same, we add two and a half percent. We know, and you know, Sharon and Edwina know what, where our loans are going to be for next year. Is that a reasonable approach? I mean, so, I mean, because I hate, we haven't really told departments anything what to expect, whether to budget level, budget lower.
So, we could just, for the purposes of, of doing this preliminary spreadsheet, we could just use the current budget.
I mean, if what you're, if what we're saying, what we're saying is there's no additional revenue other than two and a half percent plus whatever the increase in state aid is.
Right.
Plus, we don't hear anything from the assessors telling us there's any reason to...
Right.
Well, then you're not talking about a lot of money.
So, we're probably talking a level, you know, level funded budget?
Well, the two and a half percent works out to what, 300? It's about 300 and some thousand dollars, 300,000 dollars roughly?
Roughly.
Is that, am I, am I even in the ballpark there?
It might be a little, it might be a little, it's a little lower than that, I think.
Is it 270 something?
Right.
Am I totally off base?
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, and it's only two and a half percent of the actual real estate.
Right, that's right.
Not.
Not the full budget.
Not the full budget.
Right, so you're talking.
So, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, which generally between insurance and wages that, I mean...
You're going to see an increase in health insurance for sure.
We'll see an increase in health insurance, you know, the teachers get what the teachers get, DPW, you know, once we factor in all those things, I can't imagine.
Right, there's any money.
That there's any money. So, maybe what we do, you know, and this is up to you guys too, do we send a letter to, do we send a letter jointly to departments and say, you know?
Well, this is why it gets, this is why it's always tricky to have these conversations, like everyone, we always want to do this, everyone always wants to start in January, let's start budgeting, but when really, when, when your local two and a half percent increase is only not really covering your increased costs, so only new money you're actually talking about is an increase in state aid potentially, you have no idea what that is.
Right.
So, all the things that is planned in the budget, you don't know anything about what that would even possibly be.
Right.
So, it's really hard to start planning around something that you don't know what it is, especially now because you can't even look at capital or anything, because you have no idea what free cash is.
Right.
So, I mean, it makes it really tough to sort of even have like preliminary conversation because what is there to talk about beyond?
So, maybe we, maybe we continue to wait.
Yeah, I mean...
I think March is when we're going to be having a lot of meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes more sense, really.
Yeah.
Well, because you don't, I mean, state aid is...
We get the governor's number in February usually, but we don't get the house number until...
Right. And revenues are, revenues are way up, you know, or have been way up.
So, we might get a little bump, but who knows?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll just continue to wait.
Otherwise, it's pretty much well-funded, right? I mean, that's...
Right.
Without saying.
Without, yeah, I mean, and there'll be issues and I, I guess DPW was, were they a 2%?
2% cut, yeah.
Cut with the understanding that kind of 1% of that was what, you know, that, what was going on here, but this project hasn't really started yet, so is it safe to say that we got enough? So, that, that's a question for Phil, do we have another?
You mean the town hall project?
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't know when that's scheduled to start or whatever, so.
Well, we have this special town meeting to determine that in January, well, this month.
Twenty.
Oh. Okay, I didn't know about that. All right, when, when, when are we having a special town meeting?
Twenty ninth.
Okay.
January.
And this is, this is on?
The debt exclusion for the town hall, increase in costs.
Just for...
And some CPA transactions.
And is it all going to be debt excluded?
Yes.
Okay, so is there, you know, sometimes we meet in advance of that to discuss?
Seems like we should.
Seems like we should.
We schedule, yeah, we schedule a meeting in like a couple of weeks.
We're actually going to discuss the, um, the articles tonight, they're part of our agenda.
Okay. Um, could we meet in?
July the 2nd?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, 15, 17?
Sure.
Yeah, this would be, yeah, I don't know, what, what's it?
You have a deadline for posting the warrant, right?
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to post.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with us.
I can, I can...
You know, unless it, you know, unless it has recommended by finance committee on the bottom. Well, we just do that debating.
Yeah.
I mean, we could just say, this is recommended.
Right.
Or not.
Right.
I can do any of those.
Any of those? So, so do Thursdays work for anybody or not?
Not good for me.
Not good, okay.
We could try the 15th, that'd be great.
Fifteen?
Let's try the 15th.
Does that work?
I could also do that.
What day of the week is it?
Tuesday?
Thank you.
That's Tuesday.
You, okay, so the select board meets the 9th and the 23rd.
But that's right, because we can meet before the 23rd and then...
Yeah.
Can communicate anything that we have to communicate before you meet on the 23rd.
All right, so, yeah, so we'll meet on the 15th and you guys, if you just...
What time?
I don't know.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, okay.
Six, sure.
Okay. So, six thirty on the 15th and, and the, um, purpose of that meeting will be to discuss the town...
Town meeting, warrant articles.
Articles. Are there going to be multiple articles?
Just a, a couple from CPA, which are...
Oh, yes, yes, right.
I think, I think we're looking at a total of five, right, articles?
Right now, there's four, but I was going to suggest, there is a, um, an article that needs to be reauthorized, CPC authorized 380,000 in 2015.
Right.
That needs to be reauthorized, that is not on the warrant, so I was going to suggest that. The other two CPC articles that are currently on the warrant is for the property, 61.
Yeah, we've talked about last week.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other business that needs to come before this meeting?
Yeah, I thought your thought about going through and running a, a very preliminary budget for 2020, you know, was it... Yeah, I thought your thought about going through and running a, a very preliminary budget for twenty twenty, you know, was a good one. I mean, we could certainly make some assumptions around the revenue streams.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, the most single significant revenue stream is taxation.
Right.
And so you could run, you know, I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars less than what our levy limit might be, you know, for that revenue stream. Look at the other ones and assume maybe they're level funded and see what it looks like. Because I have to believe department heads are probably looking for some sort of direction at this point. Here we are.
Well, if they listen to the.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, probably.
I mean, it's not gonna be a pretty picture, but at least for Marlene to start plugging in some numbers.
This doesn't mean anything, that's the problem. You, you take three hundred thousand dollars, if we take a hundred and twenty thousand dollar hidden health insurance or something.
Right.
Then you got no money. So, you know, like, what, what would you tell them, you know, like?
I think the message right now is start, start with a level funded budget.
Yeah.
'Cause we know we had that money last year, so we should have it this year.
This is an initial reaction, you know, but.
The, the other benefit to looking at it is it, it lessens some of the mistakes, like, you know, one year we forgot to have all the, all the loans improperly. Yeah, and snow and ice, and, you know, and so.
Well, right, except for, and I agree, yeah, I agree with that. So if you don't know what you're snowing, it's definitely gonna be in jail.
Yeah.
'Cause you still have.
I just meant that we, we missed it that one year.
No, right, we did miss it.
Yeah.
The, the good news is when we find something, we don't make that same mistake twice.
We don't make that mistake again, and so, so, but yeah, no, we, we will, we're, that's what we're trying to do. That's why we haven't sent out a letter which says, you know, give us your best budget, you know, guesstimate, 'cause we don't really know yet. So, I mean, we have a rough idea.
Chad, you might have a better idea on this. To what extent, if any, do the cherry sheet numbers, are they based on, would they be based on fiscal eighteen? Our numbers are fiscal eighteen, which won't be done until, obviously, middle of February.
You mean the, the things that, the things that come in on the cherry sheet?
Yeah, well, yeah, or even the things that go up, for that matter.
Not that much, 'cause if we're talking about revenues, it's probably not based on that at all, right? It's just a function of, I'm trying to think of what's on there, so you're talking about like school reimbursement.
Right, there's receipts and charges.
You got some of the, some of the other stuff that's based on, you know, obviously, some of our balance sheet numbers are plugged in there as a, as a town and a state.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I have, believe that they use eighteen, that would wanna use eighteen, so I, I don't know what, to what extent, you know, one is dependent on the other. I guess that's my question.
My guess would be just thinking about what's on there, not that much, because you're talking about, I mean, there's some reimbursement things, so those can be impacted, right? I guess, but you're talking about like school transportation, you're talking chapter seventy aid, and that's, the bulk of it's chapter seventy, and that has nothing to do with it.
Right.
So then there's a special ed circuit breaker, but that, that would go back to, that's like what, year behind, or? So maybe, there could be some of that involved, I mean, veterans benefits, but that's super small. I mean, relative to the rest of the cherry sheet, that, that's, I mean, I don't know what else, I can't think of what else is on it.
That's pretty much the library, I mentioned the library, because those are small, those are, they're small amounts, so.
If we didn't fund the library the way we're supposed to with eighteen, that would impact our library grant, so you're talking five thousand dollars or whatever that is, yeah, yeah. So a few things, but not the big things.
Would they withhold a cherry sheet if they didn't have fiscal eighteen?
Oh, well, that's a, yeah.
That's my top, well, question, yes.
I would think they would tell you that, you know what I mean, like, in advance, they would say to you, hey, by the way. I mean, it wouldn't be, it would do nothing but ruin us in a way, you know what I mean? Like, it would be horrible and ruin us if they did that, so it would be the kind of thing that you would do, I would imagine, only if you felt like the town was intentionally making things worse. You know what I mean, like, they're actually making it worse, so we have to stop them.
Right, well, they, they, they would probably rely on the other lever that they have, which is certified free cash.
Hey, Darryl, you guys got anything else? 'Cause we got some other stuff that we have to go along with.
Thank you very much, sorry.
We're gonna take five minutes, let them clear out, and we'll be right back. Okay, we're back on, and we're gonna go to topic two. Topic two is DPW Teamsters Union 404 Agreement. We've been negotiating with the Teamsters for the last few months, and we finally came to an agreement. So I guess I, I believe I need a motion, is that correct, Marlene?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to accept our agreement that we all agreed to prior with Teamsters Local 404.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Topic three, we need to vote for PV, PC, Metropolitan Planning Organization Alternative Member. And what we have is we have two people listed, which is John O. Martin, who is presently a selectman in Southampton, and Charlie Rose, who was a selectman in Worthington. Both candidates seem like they're experienced, and I know John O. Martin from UMass, he was, he's still Director of Procurement over there. So, I don't know if either one of you wanna reclaim somebody, and we just vote it, and that's?
I, I don't know either of the gentlemen personally, and they both seem to have a background which would be beneficial to the, to the planning organization, so.
I'll take, I'll make a motion, then I'll throw a motion out. I'll make a motion to elect John Martin as the Metropolitan Planning Organization Alternative Member.
I'll second that.
Motion made, motion second. Any discussion?
No, I was just gonna say that his background, the town he's from is more similar to our town. I just think that's the only difference I could find between them.
Okay.
And the only comment I would make too, just for the people watching, is that all the communities that are part of this Metropolitan Planning Organization are having these votes, and then it's the total of all the communities that's, in their votes, that's ultimately who will be awarded or appointed.
Motion made, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Do you have the updated sheet? 'Cause I'm working off of the sheet I had from a couple days ago.
Updated?
The agenda sheet, the amended.
Oh, it's, yes, here, you can have this one if you'd like to.
Okay.
I, there is one in there for you.
All right. Okay, topic four, review January twenty ninth, special town meeting warrant articles. Presently, we have, we'll have two articles to deal with at town hall. I'm gonna call them project, for, for the sake of, of home, I'm gonna call that Project One and Project Two. Project One was bring the building up to ADA compliance, elevator, fire suppression system. And Project Two was to add an additional ramp to go down, kitchen, and some other stuff, and both of these projects are over. So we're gonna be asking the town if they wanna fund those projects or not, and, and I, I mean, I'm just hoping we can move forward on getting this building up to ADA compliance and fire suppression, and get that, because we're still under the gun with the Architectural Board to make sure that we meet their deadline. They gave us an extension, and this project, I believe, has what been seven or seven years now? So it's, it's time to preserve this historic building and, and at least get it, get it up to code for, for that part. And the second part of the article is asking for money for the down ramp. I know COA and the seniors want the down ramp, 'cause they don't wanna use the elevator to go down. So I can understand that, but that's, that's be an issue for the town to decide if, whether they, not, they wanna fund it. Now, as far as the other articles that you were referring to, Marlene, what do you have that you wanted to place in there?
So in the, the warrant that you have, the draft copy of the warrant, there's Article Three and Article Four from the Community Preservation Committee, and that is to appropriate a sum of money to contribute towards the acquisition of a conservation restriction for the property on North Hatfield Road, and that is property that the, the town is going to exercise its option to acquire or keep it in.
Was at our last meeting. There was a lot of people in favor of preserving this, this property on North Hatfield Road for farming, and we had a discussion on it. So I don't know if either, either members wanna add any comment on that article. We, we spent a lot of time discussing it at our last meeting, so.
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, I think, I think it was very clear last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's Article Four.
And the, and the second article is to appropriate a sum of money to contribute to the acquisition of an approved building lot on that parcel for, to create dwelling for affordable, affordable.
Affordable housing.
Housing, yeah. I was also going to suggest, if, if the board would like to consider adding one more article. If you recall, that the Community Preservation Committee supported funding three hundred and eighty thousand in twenty fifteen. That had a date tied to it, which was when the elevator was supposed to be operational, September first of this year. And of course, we applied for an extension from the Architectural Access Board that was granted. So we, we would need to have that article reauthorized.
So if Article One passes, then we definitely need to have that article go in.
Yes.
So should that article actually be Article Two? If we pass Article One?
It can be, absolutely, it can be, this is just a draft.
Should that be Article Two to vote that in, and then we can take up Article Three?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay, so, I mean, again, the articles that we're presenting are time sensitive. We're presenting the articles on the town hall. We made a bunch of explanation of why we're requesting a special town meeting for those articles. And the Chapter sixty-one A is also time, time sensitive to a hundred and twenty days. So unless we act on that, then it causes some legal issues, I believe, and we might, might lose the town keeping that as farmland. I mean, that's my understanding. I don't know, if you guys wanna correct me if I'm wrong?
No, it's a hundred and twenty.
Okay, so.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, go right ahead.
So I just wanna follow up on what Ed said. So what we're referring to is Article One or Project Number One. That is the state mandated upgrades that need to take place to this building. That's, that's how, it's very important that we, we get this done, because we only have about two, a year and a half to, to get the work done. Article Two or Project Number Two currently is, are basically add-ons, which are that ramp and the expansion of the kitchen and the moving of the building inspector's office. So I guess I just want the people to understand that Project Number One is kind of a have-to-do-it, and Project Number Two is a, would be nice to be able to do it. If there's the support for it, great, but Project Number One is what we're legally bound by as far as the Architectural Board. I would also, I would also add that the CPA funding or requests are just that, they're from CPA. It's got nothing to do with, with taxation or debt exclusions or anything like that. They, these funds exist already in CPA, and a request is to transfer them out or, or move them over to assist in purchasing that property. If that's all I have.
I just wanna add, I mean, if you think of Project One and Projects Two, the town already appropriated money for Projects One and Two. So thinking out of the box, if for some reason they don't go with Project Two, we're only asking the town for a little bit more if they go with Project One. But that, again, the town has to decide.
Right.
They might wanna fund the whole thing, they might, we're still gonna get information on what it's gonna cost on the taxes, how much it's gonna cost if we borrow the money. I guess we're gonna, well, hopefully, this next week or so, we'll, we'll see our treasurer and, and Sharon back there, and we'll find out, you know, if we borrow the money for Project One, what does it cost the tax rate? If we borrow the money for Project Two, what effect is it on the tax rate? What's the percentage we can get and all, all the financial things, 'cause if we go to town meeting, these are questions that everybody's gonna have, so, yes.
It might be helpful, a suggestion, if I were looking at this as a viewer tonight, I would be wondering what kind of money we're talking about here in terms of both of those articles? So can you share that, the amount of money that, that will be in Article One and in Article Two at this point?
Yes. Under Article One, well, which is for Project One I was talking about.
State mandated.
We're looking for three hundred and ninety thousand more. For Project Two, which we were talking about, we're looking for two hundred and fifty-three thousand more. And I believe Project One was, Marlene, you got the first, originally, the article was for what, a million dollars for Project One, or eight hundred thousand or something like that?
In twenty sixteen, we, we, a town meeting approved a million dollars for the code compliance component of the project, and three hundred and twenty-five thousand was authorized for what we're referring to as the add-ons. So that includes a second exterior ramp, some work in the COA kitchen.
So, so I guess, getting back to your question, Mike, for Project One, it'd be the million that was originally appropriated, which we haven't borrowed yet, and three hundred and ninety thousand. For Project Two, it would be the three hundred and twenty-five thousand that was originally asked for, plus another two fifty-three. So your total is six something, right? So. Around six hundred.
Six forty, six forty.
Would you like about six hundred thousand dollars come for the special town meeting on January twenty ninth?
Correct.
Yes, and then that, they can discuss, the town is, can decide what they wanna do with that. But the land was the last meeting, and the other articles for the land was a lot of discussion previously. And the community preservation one, which I think should be Article Two, 'cause, 'cause it's important if Article One passes, Article Two is the CPA money, right? Because if we don't have, if, if we pass Article One and we don't approve the CP that was prior approved and reapprove it, then we'd be, have to ask for another hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right? Basically, so, okay.
I think the good news is with that additional article we're discussing tonight, is that the money was already appropriated. It's kinda sitting there, it's just a matter of we've gotta bring it up to speed to, for this year to, because it had an expiration date on it, basically.
And at, at another previous meeting, Mike, we did go over reasons behind the cost overruns. The cost overruns were for the ADA compliant originally, we did pass the water pressure test for the fire suppression system. The second time, when it came time to do it, we did not. We requested another test, the third time, we did not. So that's an additional electrical service and a fire pump, there's like a hundred thousand right there. I know the architect, we went back to the architect, said, is there any way we can save anything? He went back and he said the most he could probably trim, if he valued engineered it anymore, was maybe another twenty grand, so. And then it's been now seven or eight years, so when you think of a million dollars in project increase of three or, three to five percent per year for the last seven years, you get all those costs. So I mean, I know you wanna say something.
No, I'm just thinking, back in twelve sixteen, I think it was, there, there was supposed to be a feasibility study done on the downstairs here, and I don't think it was ever done. That was gonna be part of this whole thing, and I'm wondering, was there money appropriated for that?
Twenty-five thousand.
So we still have that, then?
We still have that. So on one hand, if they do, if we do Project One.
They're gonna get in before the study.
And then do the feasibility, and they don't approve Project Two, and if they do the feasibility study, then that may be putting a ramp in the back. You know what I'm saying? I don't know.
Cindy's point, are, are we going to do a feasibility study, or are we not? And if not, can we redirect those funds into the project?
And then that project did not get done.
Well, the feasibility study wasn't done, because it was never determined what ultimately was gonna be happening with the downstairs or the upstairs. Well, the feasibility study wasn't done, because it was never determined what ultimately was gonna be happening with the downstairs or the upstairs. You know, the work hasn't been done, so, and here we are, again, looking to, you, you know, are we gonna increase the size of the kitchen? Are we gonna move, you know, it's, it's just.
I mean, the town at one time wanted to look at the church.
But the money was appropriated, yes.
It's, there's not specifics, though.
Yeah, so, right, right.
So the, the money in, the money in either article, none of, how much of that money is, is targeted towards upgrading the downstairs?
Well, it's split, again, it's split into two projects, okay?
Okay.
Both projects have cost overruns, all right? Two articles, the first article is the upstairs and the elevator and handicap, ADA compliance and the fire alarm and all that, which is just an up ramp, okay? And then the second article, which was another cost overrun, and included a ramp to go downstairs, like it is out there now, the kitchen to be upgraded to the code.
So we have a plan for that, or, or, or is that just renovating the existing kitchen? Because as I understand it, the, I hate to, you know, bring this all up again, but the, the, the elevator, when it's constructed, it's gonna have a major impact on the existing kitchen.
That's right.
Therefore, there was some redesign done of the existing kitchen, there was a study with the council on aging, and they kind of, you know, put their thing together, and, and there were designs developed. So is one of the, has one of those designs been selected and costed out, and is that part of article two? That is, okay, now, and the building inspector's office is going to be, uh, moved, is the moving of his office part of article two, the actual cost?
Yes, so, see, the second project, the COA requested not additional space for the kitchen, just to get back to space they were gonna lose from the elevator, which then would kick the building inspector out and put him across the hall and make his space over there. That was all under project two that I was, I'm calling, okay? And that was all part of that funding.
Is the move the building inspector's office across the hall downstairs?
Well, actually, where the police station is, in that corner.
Okay, all right.
By the stairs.
I'm not sure how many people are actually aware of that, but, um, so will you be providing some sort of a public document?
Yeah, we'll have the architect, the architect's gonna be there.
That kinda graphically shows, you know, what's going to be done and.
Well, the architect.
We could bring the same drawing that we brought last time.
It's still a project, it's still the same project that was voted previously.
And the architect will be there.
We, we presented this a few times.
So the specs haven't changed the cost?
That's correct.
Correct.
The specs have not changed.
These are cost estimates on those two projects, and they came over, there was nothing added from original.
Right.
This is just the, when they wanted out to, to get their estimates, all the estimates came back and higher.
All right, and so will you continue to have that twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked for a feasibility study?
Yes.
Cause you still would plan on having a feasibility study done, and that feasibility study would be for what?
Well, the feasibility study was requested by COA to determine if the facilities downstairs was adequate for the COA and what the needs of the COA, uh, are, that's my understanding of that feasibility study. Okay?
Thank you, I think that was helpful.
All right, that's good.
For me reviewing.
That's helpful for me, I actually understand what I was saying, okay, that's good.
Good job. Good job, man.
Do we have any, do you need anything on these articles that we have to do tonight?
Uh, just for the record, if the board agrees to add the, uh, article to reauthorize the three hundred and eighty thousand?
Well, I don't have a problem with these articles to authorize that, and I don't have a problem with adding it, I just, my opinion, I think that should be article two, because if article one goes in, you gotta have that.
It's more in sequence, yeah.
Okay.
It's confusing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make a motion to, to do that, then?
Okay, I'll second that motion, any discussion?
No.
Motion made, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so be it. Any other business we have?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, there's one more, one more, one more item. I, I don't know if we did an, I don't know if you announced at the beginning that there's a box for census.
I did, but, yeah, but that's okay, just a reminder that the, the town clerk is looking to get those.
Census, get your census then, okay.
Get those census forms in, please. And in that envelope, if you haven't opened it yet, we'll also reference the special town meeting and the special election, so, that, that information's in there as well.
And hopefully, can see you there.
Yeah.
No, you, I'll.
Motion to adjourn.
Does that warrant have to be signed?
All in favor, so be it.
Thank you, John.